I'm looking at the players. Are we ready for our study session?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
We definitely are.
And are we ready to record?
Yes.
Okay. Great. So, good evening, everybody. I'm calling the study session to order. And this is, we have one item tonight. And it's about, oh, should call, do the roll call, please. I'm getting ahead of myself here.
Councilmember Asher.
Here.
Councilmember Donahue.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Here.
And Mayor Atkins.
Here. I'll do the pledge, call for the pledge later on at the other meetings. Any public comments for items that are not on this study session agenda? See none, we'll move right into the study session. And Michelle, I guess this is your report.
Good evening, Mayor Atkins and members of the Emeryville City Council. Michelle De Guzman from the Economic Development and Housing Division. I'm here tonight to report to you on the Christie Avenue Properties redevelopment. This is the redevelopment of two parcels that are currently owned by the city. The purpose of tonight's report is to update you on the status of these properties, as well as obtain comment for their potential redevelopment for further evaluation, as well as for inclusion in future requests for proposals, to solicit proposals for the redevelopment of these sites. The properties that are called the Christie Avenue Properties collectively are, consist of 5890 and 5900 Christie Avenue, which is two buildings that sit on a single parcel, and 6150 Christie Avenue. Their combined size is about a little over two and a half acres. The acreage that is actually developable is just, just over two acres. The overall context in which these properties exist is largely defined by the public market, which sits immediately to the east of the property, the Christie Avenue Park, which is to the north, and residential to the, to the west and northwest. This is an aerial view of the, of the properties. And just to give some context, this is 6150 Christie. In the yellow, the green is 5890 and 5900. This is the public market. This is a live-work residential, Christie Avenue Commons project. This is a small commercial building with a FedEx in it. And of note is this right here, which is labeled 59th Street, sorry, is actually not a city street. That is an easement and not a, a city-owned public street. So I'll sort of go over the, the two parcels in a little bit more detail. 5890, 5900 Christie is about 1.8 acres. It's the larger of the two properties, clearly. About one, a little under one and a half is developable. The existing conditions are, there are two commercial buildings on there, as well as a small storage shed and a surface parking lot. One of the buildings is currently in use by Public Works as a temporary corporation yard. And the 59th Street is, as I noted, an easement that provides pedestrian and vehicular access to the public market property from Christie Avenue. 6150 Christie Avenue is about a third of the site. It's about .7 acres total, but only about half an acre of that is developable. It is currently vacant. However, it had previously been permitted for a multifamily project. And construction had started on that project. So as a result, there is actually an abandoned foundation structure consisting of a grid of pre-driven, sorry, driven pre-stressed concrete piles and connecting grade beams. Additionally, this property was acquired using affordable housing funds under the, under the agency and as a result would need to be developed with affordable housing, although that obligation may be transferred to another city-owned property elsewhere. And just to go back to the photo, you can clearly see the, the grid of pre-driven piles The general plan and zoning for this property is, under the general plan, it's designated as mixed-use residential. Additionally, it's identified as an area of change where there should be a mix of uses, as well as a location that is identified for iconic mid-to-high-rise development. The zoning is MUR, mixed-use residential, with pedestrian priority and transit hub overlays. The residential density is, as you can see, 115 dwelling units or up to 170. Similarly, the FAR is 4.0 up to 6.0, and the height is 100 and up to over 100. And the difference between these is the first number is the amount that is allowed by right. The second higher number is the number that could be achieved with development bonuses. One thing to note is this, these sites are located in the areas of the city that are designated for the highest density, the highest FAR, and the highest height. And so it is certainly possible to redevelop these properties in an economically feasible manner without having to, to pursue any of the, the requirements under the density bonuses. And you achieve density bonuses by including certain public benefits that are included in the, in the city's planning, planning regs and are listed there. So this table, which I will not read in detail, shows the development potential of each of the sites individually, both with that by right and then also if, if the full development potential is achieved through the use of a density bonus. And so you can see if, if the properties by right could achieve, they could achieve up to 230 residential units and by using all of the bonuses could achieve up to 342 dwelling units. So there are several development scenarios that could be pursued with these, with these properties. One idea is to look at pursuing multiple developers to develop the, the two parcels separately. And under that, the, conceptually, there could be no, no expansion of the Christie Avenue Park. The Christie Avenue Park, as I noted, is, is immediately north of the property. It is being expanded itself to the north as part of the expansion of the, or the implementation of the public market, PUD. And one concept is whether or not that should be expanded to the, to the south, to these properties. And so these sort of just look at the, the two ends of possibility within that. One end would be no park expansion. And if 6150 Christie was developed by a single developer as an affordable housing development, that would give us 62 to 92 dwelling units. And 5890 and 5900 developed by a single market rate developer, then that would include 169 to 250 dwelling units and floor areas of about 260 to 384, 85,000 square feet. One concept for the park expansion would be to use the entirety of the 6150 parcel for an expansion of the Christie Avenue Park. And 5900 could be a mixed-use residential. 6150 and 5890, looking at the outlines of the properties, even though 5900 and 58, 5900 and 5890 are a single parcel, 6150 and 5890 are relatively close in size. So if you were to give 6150 to park expansion, then it's possible to switch that requirement to the 5890 parcel and have that be developed as affordable housing. Again, similarly, looking at a similar concept, but a single developer doing it would have no park expansion and we, there could be a mix of uses across all three properties. And that would achieve the, the maximum densities that were described in the table before. And again, looking at the park expansion just onto the 6150 property and then using the 5890 and 5900 properties together as a mixed-use development with affordable units integrated within the overall project. And then other possible development scenarios. The concept could be that the affordable housing obligation is transferred to another city-owned property entirely. Candidates that staff has, could consider would be the 4060 Hollis Civic Center parking lot property here behind City Hall, the currently occupied by the Recreation Center property at 43rd Street and San Pablo Avenue. One thing to note is both of these properties are east of the railroad tracks, as is the majority of the city's affordable housing. And there are very few affordable housing units in this, in the Christie Avenue properties location. Another possible scenario would be a lot line adjustment, where you could move the easement, the, you know, that effectively functions as a 59th Street easement, to shift the development among the parcels. And later, when we brought this to the Planning Commission, one of, there was a proposal that was brought forth that involved shifting that, and I'll go into more detail on that The concept of redeveloping these parcels was brought to the staff at the Development Coordinating Committee. And they looked at a couple of the different questions that were out there. One is, should it be a single developer or multiple developers? And sort of pros and cons of both, multiple developers with separate sites. You could have a more experienced affordable housing developer do the affordable housing portion of it. You could have more fine-grained design by having different, different developers and different architects work on the projects. A single developer on a combined site would allow the affordable units to be spread more evenly throughout the, the project and also provides for a more desirable and larger development opportunity. And the issues related to circulation, transportation, parking, is that any sort of parking service loading should be from the alley, which is essentially behind the project, which is really the driveway on the public markets project that is used for parking and for access along the, the western side of that property. And that's to reduce the number of curb cuts and, and access along Christie Avenue. And then, but there should be a pullout on Christie for delivery and transportation services, but generally to minimize the, the vehicular access along that street. There should be east-west pedestrian access across the site. And because this is a transit hub overlay, there should be, parking should be reduced as much as possible through car-share pods, provision of AC transit EZ passes, bike parking. Sorry, this is so small. In terms of the development intensity and design, because there is such high density FAR and height allowed in this area, and this is the area in which that type of high-density development is, is pursued in the general plan, that development, to the extent possible, should be maximized. As a result of that also, there should be larger family-friendly units, especially on the lower four floors, to access the, the nearby amenity of the park. Rooftop space could be utilized for active recreation. And again, the consideration of extending the Christie Avenue Park south to the site. When the Christie Avenue Park expansion to the north was brought to the council last year, the council did provide staff direction that there should be additional consideration of the expansion of the park to the south into these, these city-owned properties as well, although the extent of that was not, not defined at that time. Non-residential uses that be, that could be considered for the site, generally felt it wasn't a strong location for sort of pedestrian-oriented retail, so that it should really look at destination uses, entertainment, recreation, school uses, both public or private schools, social services, the arts, nonprofits. A hotel conference center. And I should note that staff has met with, with hotel developers who are aware of the site and have had interest in it and wanted to talk to us about the process. Potentially for childcare, studio, sort of light industrial renter space, the concept of maker space, you know, artisan or artist space. This was last brought to the Planning Commission in December and of last year. And for site planning, the Planning Commission did indicate that they agree that Christie Avenue Park should be expanded, but not for the entirety of all of the properties, because they felt this was an important development site. And then this was, that was discussed, was the moving easement to actually align on the public market property. There is a west-facing pedestrian entrance. And the concept that was put forward at the Planning Commission was to move that easement to align with that, so that access would, there could be some vehicular access, but as well pedestrian access, since there's already a, a visual connection with the existing pedestrian access. And then this would also change the, sort of the, the development opportunity of the, of the property. They suggested developing it as an integrated site with the affordable housing mixed in along with market rate units and encouraged a green street, so a farther vegetated setback rather than a zero-lot line development. And in order to achieve the fine-grained design while using a single developer would be to encourage two architects under, working under a single developer and, again, working with the public market, since they are in the process of seeking approvals for the FD, final development plans under their planned unit development, that the city is well-positioned to consider negotiating access to this property. In terms of residential uses, the commission felt that these were very valuable as housing sites, particularly as ownership units, since there's quite a few ownership units within this area, and that townhome units should be included particularly with, with street-level porches. And concurring with the, what staff had indicated, that non-residential uses, that small-scale retail would be difficult to focus on a single anchor destination and partnering with organizations and entities for interesting non-residential uses. And one example that came up was if there could be gallery space for the Expression Center for New Media, but generally sort of gallery space, nonprofit space, but something that would be a destination in and of itself. The next steps after this study session, based on inputs from, from the council, staff will likely retain some, some architects or other consultants to just do some simple site planning to include with a request for proposals to lay out, lay out some of the possibilities to see how they might fit, as well as if there's any other analysis that, that is needed before the issuance of the RFP. Develop a draft request or requests for proposals, depending if council directs staff to issue a single or multiple RFPs for the different properties. And, sorry, I skipped to my second one, my third one. So we're looking for some direction at this point in terms of the, the development of the scenarios and the request for proposals. What is the extent to which Christie Avenue Park should be expanded? Are there any design considerations that should be included in the request for proposals for compatibility with both the existing and the future developments in the area? Should the affordable housing be onsite? Or should it be relocated to another city-owned site elsewhere in the city? Should it be a single mixed-use project with the affordable housing spread throughout? Or should the affordable housing be done as a separate discreet project on, on these parcels? What are appropriate non-residential uses? How large a project should be developed? Are there any specific circulation and transportation and parking issues that should be addressed specifically in the request for proposals? And then other considerations, and this is, in that this would be a city-issued request for proposals and these proposals would be evaluated. The city would decide what proposals are more desirable, given, given the overall scheme that's presented. And so if there are any other considerations, if the council wanted to identify a certain unit mix among bedroom types, one, two, three bedrooms or goals, if there were any of the public benefits, as I noted, this project already has by right, a very, could develop a very high-density project. However, since these are, however, since this is a city-owned properties, we could still seek those public benefits by giving additional consideration to proposals that include them as part of their, as part of their scheme. And so just for reference, I'll go back to the questions. These are the public benefits that you can, that developers can put into their, their projects to achieve the density bonuses and achieve those, those higher numbers for a typical project. It could be blanket or if there's ones that are specific that the council would want to give greater weight to. So with that, my presentation is concluded. I will go back to the list of questions that staff is seeking direction on.
Great. At this point, I'd like to entertain only clarifying questions from council, then I'll open it up for public comment on this, and then we'll have council discussion. So does anybody up here have a question or?
I have a quick question. Could you remind me, Michelle, or Charlie, or somebody, the expansion of Christie Park that we're now envisioning and undertaking, how, how much is that expansion? It's bigger by how much?
Well, this, it's to the north of the existing park.
Right.
I don't recall off the top of my head the exact numbers. It's a little less than double the size of the park.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other clarifying questions for staff?
I have, what are the soils like under these parcels? Are they relatively clean? And are the, the geologic structures of those soils suitable for really high development, for high 200-foot-tall buildings?
I don't know that we've done a soils analysis at Geotech to determine the stability of the, of the soils for supporting the, the larger structures. Typically, that would be something that would occur if we were to enter into an agreement with a developer during the, essentially what would be the escrow period, they would test those soils. And in terms of the, the, the other state of the soils, the city attorney is more aware of that status.
It's nothing worse than what we've seen in town before. So it certainly, there, there are some issues there, but nothing insurmountable.
And just in terms of the high-rise potential, you know, just generally speaking, you can always engineer to build, you know, whatever you want. The entire area west of the railroad is all bay fill, because the original shoreline was where the railroad tracks are. We have, the tallest building in town is right across the street, you know, so it can be done.
Any other questions?
I have a question, and maybe this is just a legal question, but if the public market has an easement for what is effectively a driveway?
Correct.
What would, so that means that they don't own the land. We own the land now, right?
We own the land, but it's subject to their right.
To have an easement.
Have an easement across there. So to the extent we wanted to relocate that easement, we would need to obtain their consent to that.
So, but we could also construct a city street, because then they would have easement rights on the city street like?
Well, that doesn't, that doesn't preclude them from saying, "Thank you, city, for constructing that nice street. We have access to that, but we still have a property right to this easement, and we want to keep that."
So they'd have to do a quit claim on the easement?
Yeah.
And basically, if the easement got moved, or if it got constructed into a street, then?
Yeah.
There still would have to be?
We would have to interact with them to get, to remove that street.
Okay. Thank you.
There is one slight technicality with relation to the planning regulations about that, however. If it's a city street that is open to the general public 24/7, then it's not considered developable, it isn't counted as part of the developable property. If it's a private easement that just provides access to a single property, but not to the public generally, then you can still count that area towards the development potential of the, of the overall site.
Understood. Thank you. Thanks, Michelle. Anybody in the audience would like to come up? Yeah, please. And you'll have three minutes, and if anybody else wants to speak, just line up.
My name is John Jackson. I'm a resident in Pacific Park Plaza. And we're grateful, as I indicated in the notes I sent everyone, that the city council and the planning people are proceeding with the analysis. I, as I noted in my notes, and I'm not going to talk about everything I sent you, I was disappointed that though the, the staff is acknowledging a disparity in economic integration of the affordable housing in the city, they didn't acknowledge what's been pointed out by city council here in previous meetings, and that is the disparity between the population density and the parkland of this area that we're talking about. That should be a major factor, and it should have been mentioned in the staff report, and it's not. That said, I don't have many other comments.
Talk into the microphone, you're being broadcast.
I brought with me a drawing, which is a modification I made three years ago of a page out of the general plan, which Nora knows about because she was at the meeting with Patrick O'Keefe. And, and it simply shows, it, it shows what I drew at the time, an expansion of Christie, an expansion of Christie Park, which is here, down to 59th easement or street, whatever you want to call it. And as you can, and it also shows Hollis Park as it had been planned, eight acres. The city couldn't get that, so that Hollis, Doyle Hollis is about a quarter of that size. And what I want to point out here is, if you shrink Doyle Hollis and you think about what I've drawn there, those green spaces are still a fairly small refuge in a sea of asphalt and concrete. And that's what I wanted you to, and I would recommend that all of you go and look at that, that's figure 5.4 in the general plan and think about, it says a lot when you look at that. And so that was one thing I wanted to say. And then I was just finally going to say, it takes a lot of courage for city council to spend money. It doesn't take much courage for city council to recoup money from developers or to replenish the funds in the city. Leadership, which is what you got to do here, is when you make, you pull the trigger and you make the decision to spend money for the benefit of the citizens and for the workers, and that's what you got to do here. And so don't let anybody, yourselves, or staff, or anybody, talk you out of doing what's right.
Any other public comment?
Okay, I would like to piggyback onto what that gentleman there just said. The five of you should know that Emeryville's park and open space ratio to population is, I think it's either the least in the entire Bay Area, or I know it's definitely the least in our region. We're way, way subpar on population per acre of park and open space. So we are sorely in need of increasing that ratio to make it so we have, you know, maybe as much as Oakland, although that, we'd have to get a lot to get that high, or Berkeley. So we are in dire need of more park and open space, and so I concur with what that gentleman was just saying. I'd like to correct the record. Charlie Bryant, the head of the redevelopment, I'm sorry, the head of the, the planning department just said that the pre-Columbian shoreline was east of the railroad tracks. In fact, in Emeryville, it, the pre-Columbian shoreline was west of the railroad tracks a little bit, and I know this from investigating that at the University of California Archaeology Department. So Mr. Bryant was incorrect in that. Now, the staff has told us that, that this site is perfect for high, tall buildings, because Ms. De Guzman quoted the general plan's idea of these, what's called the central core concept, as laid out, is laid out by the general plan. And this is, this idea is that in the central core, the Christie core, it's called the Christie Powell Core, part of Emeryville, where the general plan envisions tall buildings radiating downward as you migrate in any compass direction from the central core. And that is, in fact, what we and the people of Emeryville envisioned when we vetted the general plan. We decided we want, we liked the central core idea, and so this presumably would assuage that desire of the people of Emeryville. However, the central core concept, right after it was initiated, when the general plan was, was written, it was subverted by developers seeking much taller buildings than the central core concept would allow, most notably John Nady and others, who came before the council and asked. and asked to be let out of the restrictions imposed upon him by the central core concept. And he didn't want 55-foot-tall buildings, which was an increase over the previous general plan, which limited the height on his parcel and extremely north Emeryville, too. I think it was 45 feet. So he wanted it more than 55 feet, and he wanted unlimited building height, and this council said yes to that. So the central core has already been subverted, so bear that in mind.
Anybody else want to speak?
I work at Housing California, we're the state's leading nonprofit advocacy group on affordable housing, and I just wanted to thank Michelle. It was a great presentation, and I wanted to guide you towards a couple of things I think were brought before you, but would be good for further reflection. The state and the city of Emeryville both have a number of policies in place. We have a policy for climate change and climate planning and transit models, and ours are very much in line with what the state is doing. And this is a very good opportunity to engage in something called Sustainable Community Development, which has been the, it's the collective process that's used to incorporate those pieces together. And so there's a few things I'd like to point out. Beyond the overlays, this is a pedestrian and transit-friendly zone. There's been a lot of move at the state level in the past year to improve affordable housing access in transit-rich areas. And in brief, there's a very strong correlation between how we put low-income families in transit-friendly and pedestrian-friendly spaces as a way of reducing climate change. Low-income people rely heavily on old vehicles. They tend to live farther away from the place where they're employed, and so the reliance on that vehicle outweighs their opportunity to use a bus or mass transit. When land value, when you develop transit, or in a place like Emeryville, you have higher land values. Land values price out low-income families. When you protect certain spaces for them to live in, they will abandon their polluting old vehicle in favor of bicycle, pedestrian, and mass transit. And so this is an opportunity, given where it is, to not only build sustainably, but to prevent future traffic impediments to the community, future pollution, both noise and GHG emissions, to do something socially just by integrating people of different income classes to the community. And I would propose that the model that was of the choices given to you, making the northern, the 6150 property a piece of Christie Park is going to make it attractive to families in particular. It is going to build out, to Mr. Jackson's points, it's going to build out closer in line to what the general plan called for. And I would recommend combining the two properties at the south end for one single development as opposed to two for a couple reasons. As a matter of land use principles, when you do, for, not even to mention the bureaucracy and the process you'll go through here in the city by having two separate applications running their course. But as a matter of land use, when you, when a developer has to pencil out those projects, that will require higher FAR, higher height variance, and so we're going to build more dense, taller buildings to accomplish what each developer needs to make the project profitable for them. And so in order to, to prevent the kinds of things we're already talking about with the public market development on the other side, we should do that.
That's it. Thank you, John. Anybody else? All right. Public comments closed. Now, council, let's weigh in on those questions. Can you put the questions back up? Should we just sweep, I'll just sweep down. Scott, you want to start?
Initially, I thought that it'd be better to have more architects, more architectural variety, but Mr. Bouders has made some pretty compelling points about being able to really do integrated, diverse housing. We really need this. And it just seems like an entire, single property being one thing of housing that is all of one class of people would not serve our city well. And I like the idea a lot of having the housing affordability integrated into the overall complex. And I wouldn't necessarily be against the park having an irregular shape if that could be done, partly because I think that the green space idea that has been proposed, a green street on Christie is an attractive idea. And so just to parcel it as rectangles might not be that aesthetically or pleasing to everyone who has to live with the site. And so I think that a good design might not just think in terms of pure rectangles and parcel lines. I don't have any objection to a lot of height, especially if the architecture is attractive. And having a public amenity on a roof that's 200 feet tall would be a draw for our city. I don't, I don't have an objection to that.
Any other comments?
No.
Jack?
So, looking at this, I've been, I keep thinking back to the last city council meeting and to the public's concern about affordable housing and about ownership housing. And where I am at this point is, first of all, I want affordable housing. I want it in this area. I want it there because of the wonderful amenities that are already there, right? And in the spaces where we have affordable housing in other places throughout town, we still need to do a lot of work over there to make it look like Emeryville. So this, this already has, it will have a grocery store, it will have the transit, it will have a park right next to it. And so having the affordable housing there is a priority for me. I don't want to move it or locate it to any other city-owned site. For me, thinking about ownership, one of the things that I'm really interested in is something that I took advantage of myself when I bought my first house, and that is a ground lease. So I worked at the University of California, Irvine. There, the median housing price right now in Irvine is $800,000. It's about, you know, they, it's kind of like the Bay Area. It's unaffordable. And so the university retains the land, and then staff and faculty have the opportunity to occupy these ownership units with a 99-year ground lease. And just thinking about the artist co-op and the way that ownership and affordability has allowed people to have a very long tenure in our city, to increase their civic participation, to influence the culture, the history of our city, is something that I'm really interested in. I think we have a good model, and I would like us to do something like that. So I'm, I'm interested in ownership and affordable ownership. And for me, that, a ground lease or a community land trust seems to offer that possibility. What I'm also concerned about is that, in terms of affordable housing, some of the models that we've used since I've been on council is, have been that the affordability may not go on in perpetuity, right? That it may be for 55 years, and I think we need to think way far ahead. And I feel like the model of the ground lease would be a great way for people to enter the ownership market. It would protect them from the ups and downs of the market. And so for me, that's dictating what I see on the site. If there was a way to get a developer to do affordable ownership housing and to have that mix with market rate, you know, maybe, but right now, I'm also leaning toward having an affordable site unto itself, with the understanding that what I'm looking for is affordability and perpetuity and ownership, that those are real priorities for me, along with family-friendly and being near, being near the park. And I think that's it for me, for now.
Diane?
I would like to co-sign to, onto a lot of sentiments that Scott and Jack have expressed, specifically affordability, ownership, increasing park space, and I don't know if we've gotten specific about that, but the equivalent of the 6150 property, I think, should be considered. Although, I like Scott's idea of not making that one big rectangle, because for the rest of the space, I am in favor of density. I think we should have, be able to consider getting more people in there who will be closer to their jobs and helping to reduce greenhouse gases by reducing their commute, by living in an urban space close to transit. Let's see. Along those lines, my concerns run along the lines of making sure that it truly is a transit-friendly experience. And thinking into the future, you know, I know one of our development bonuses is based on bike parking, but there's more that people who ride bikes and who ride buses and use mass transit, there's a lot more that we can do for these people. And not just for the people who live in this place, but people who will consider this a destination. As Scott said, it would be an interesting idea to have space on top of a building, you know, where that might be a draw. You know, I recently visited one of our hotels in Emeryville that, and I was directed to a bike rack around the back, next to the jacuzzi. That bike rack isn't there anymore, people. We need to make sure that, you know, cyclists, that pedestrians, that into the future, we're considering how people are going to get around and not just make it parking spaces. So those are my thoughts, increasing the park space in combination with a high density. And, oh, sorry, one more thing, getting, I'm interested in having the affordable units integrated into the development.
Nora?
Yeah. I think what I'm hearing from everybody is, there is a real consensus here that we want to increase Christie Avenue Park. And I agree with John Bouders and with Scott. I think we can take a look at 6150 Christie and agree that that space should be added to the Christie Avenue Park. So I would be strongly support that. In terms of the affordable housing, I agree with you, Diane, and with Scott and with John. I think it should be integrated. I'm not interested in having separate secluded areas for affordable housing. When you have a mix of income, you develop more of a, I believe, a good community than whether you segregate people by income. So I strongly, would strongly support the mix of affordable with the market rate housing. And aside to that, I really think we should set some parameters on the percentage of the affordable, and I'm thinking somewhere between 25 and 30%, which is a doable thing for developers. I'm not in favor of pushing a more affordable housing to the east side. Let's look at this site. Let's develop this site once we've expanded the park. But the other thing is, if we go up high, and I'm so glad to hear Scott and Diane say they're not afraid of heights, because the higher you go, the more you can develop more green area around your building. And I think when we talk to developers, we should say that. That is one of the benefits. You go up, we want more green space. We want you to develop a green street on Christie Avenue. We want perhaps a way to walk through from the park down to the easement, wherever that may be. There's a real opportunity there to have, I hate to use the term iconic, but this could really be an iconic project. And then the non-residential uses, I know the mayor is interested in a hotel, what, a convention center. We certainly aren't going to try to compete with Moscone Center or downtown Oakland, but there is a niche in the market where a small convention facility, we have a number of hotels and are getting more to have some sort of a thing, not run by the city, run by a private developer. Maybe the developer would be interested in that. So, and I agree with the staff recommendations. This is not a place where we want to put little empty storefronts for retail. It just, it doesn't work. Hasn't worked, won't work. How large a project to be developed, I think, is certainly constrained by the general plan, by the zoning requirements, and by the planning commission. We have a real opportunity here for circulation, transportation, and parking, and we want to instruct or request of the planning commission and staff that they develop with whoever the developer is, a real focus on these issues. And on the public benefit, we'd like to see that we can get as much as we can get. Thank you. Free parts.
Michelle, could you do me a favor and put up the planning commission comments as we talk about this? So there is, I agree with the vice mayor, there is some consensus already, I think, and perhaps unanimity around expanding the park space, although I will say that as someone who gave feedback to the public market about expanding the park, it's like, okay, it's back to the drawing board, but that's a nice problem to have, because we had come pretty far in designing the new park there. And I think it was going to be very active, as active as Doyle Hollis because of the way it was planned, but to add more land space to do that would entertain more possibilities. So I think we are in favor of doing that at 6150, at least in part. I do agree that we're looking for as much affordable ownership as possible. I do think the easement should become a public street, and we should have conversations with the public market about what their future needs are as they develop and whether a public street would serve their purposes. I'm open to the planning commissioners, planning commissions' idea to move the easement to align with the pedestrian entrance, and that can help break up the parcel, a little, or parcels. So that adds to the fine-grained nature of, that's the language of the, of the general I've heard, at least a few of us talk about a green street there, so we definitely need more vegetation. What I wanted to see is about the kind of purple plumbing for the recycled water and whether, whether it could be dual, whatever's built there can be dual-plumbed. And my comments about, I'm very intrigued with Jack's idea about a building on top with a ground lease, so that the, but at the end of 99 years, we're left with a depreciated property, and then the question is, is what do we do with it at that point? But I do like that if that means that, that increases the number of larger bedroom, family-friendly designed units that could, that are affordable for ownership. You know, what's happening in town with renters is, if we can build something fresh where they don't, where that doesn't keep happening, that would be a good thing. And then around the comment about mixed use, I think I would entertain an entertainment use that isn't retail on that site, because the public market has some of that already, and it could build onto an additional amenity that people living there would take advantage of. So any kind of entertainment/recreational use, I would be excited to look at. And then I was just a little confused about how staff I was just a little confused about how staff could come up with the number of dwelling units with the FARs or whatever without knowing, I mean, how many of those are three bedrooms, maybe dare I even say four bedrooms, two bedrooms, one bedrooms, or studios. So I think it's premature to talk about the number of units that could be built there, because we don't, we haven't heard what the, what the unit mix is. And council feels really strongly about having larger-sized units there, if that means decreasing the, the number of overall units. So, let's see. That's it for my, oh, you know, the townhome idea? I think that would be great. I'm not sure if it's going to be great there. But having lived in one, in a project that was very, has served Emeryville well, I would love to see more townhomes built. And if not there, then I think there's some other places in town that beg for townhomes. So I think that's it. Staff have an idea about how to fashion an RFP from this discussion? Any other comments?
Mayor, can I just want to respond to your comment about the number of units? That was simply a number crunching exercise based on what the zoning says. It doesn't mean that would necessarily be the number of units you would get, but under what the zoning is, that's the maximum number you could have. And the zoning doesn't specify the size of the units, you know?
I see.
It's just density in units per acre, that's what's allowed. So that's all it was.
Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Biddle. Mike, how soon can we rectify, the 6150 parcel, right now has a requirement to have housing on it, right? So how soon can we move that through the other parcels? What does it require?
How soon can we repeat that?
Well, right now, 6150 was bought with funds that you had to use for housing, right? So how soon can we clean that up so that it's able to be used for a park?
Well, the City General Fund wants to write a check tomorrow to the city's housing fund, and it'd be done for the, you know, for the...
That's easy. Well, that's what it takes, right?
Yeah, it's essentially, I mean, you'd have to do, from the city as the housing successor's perspective, it would want to have the parcel appraised, so we know what the fair market value is. And then it could sell it to the city, and the City General Fund would pay that amount.
Does this have to go to the oversight board?
No, this is all city-owned property.
And what is your recommendation on proceeding with this as we go forward with the request for proposal from developers?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't deal with this until you know what it is that you're going to do as part of the, you know, after you've gone through the RFP process and, and, you know, identified who, you know, which, which party you're going to interact with on development. I don't think you have to make that decision right now unless you're planning to have the park constructed right now.
No, no, no. But I want to make sure that we get down to a certain point in time and we don't have something holding us up because of prior commission commitment to housing. From what you say, all it takes is writing a check, right?
Pretty much, yeah. And then, I mean, if you're...
That was the answer to my question.
Yeah. And you could, obviously, you can transfer the obligation to the other parcels that are part of this whole discussion.
Jack, you have one more thing?
Yeah, to talk a little bit more about the affordability issue. Nora mentioned something like 25% to 30% affordability. I, I'm struggling here to, to think about having all of 6150 as a park, because I don't, I don't know what the impacts are going to be in terms of, am I going to get the depth of affordability I'm looking for in this development? And to me, that seems like a, a point that I should be thinking about after I know more about the unit mix, about how much affordability we can get on the site, to say that all of 6150 is, that we're willing to transfer the affordable housing over to another site. I just, it sounds like there's a majority here that is okay with that. But I, I don't think I'm at that point yet. Because for me, right now, the most important thing is affordability, larger units, and family-friendly, and ownership, right? I have, I have to understand how those things are working together to get us the kind of project that everybody has been asking for in town. And so I'm, I don't know if that means that we would just use some of 6150, or that we could still do that successfully by having the entire parcel as a park.
Yeah, you want to say something?
So part of the exercise that staff is going to do after this is based on this direction. We were planning to conduct some feasibility studies on different sort of development scenarios on the properties. And there are funds budgeted in the, in the operating budget for those feasibility studies of these properties. So that would include looking at the size. But we needed guidance as to how much the council was looking at for, for parkland.
And one other thing I would like to see, when we have discussions about affordable housing, I just think it would be really useful. We keep saying, affordable housing, affordable housing. But I would like to see and be able to remind the public of what that really translates into. For example, I've looked at some cities that list the percentage of AMI, right, and the affordability levels. And then next to that, they'll have the, they'll use, you know, from the, they'll use job statistics to talk about, for instance, that equals a childcare worker's salary, right, or a teacher's salary, just so that the public can understand what we're talking about when we're talking about affordability. And we have those AMIs in front of us. I think it's just always good to remind folks.
Mayor, can I just add that since this is a former redevelopment housing asset, 6150, and it's subject to provisions SB 371 that was passed. And so the affordability component we're talking about that will be required relates to low, very low, and extremely low. So it's not, it's not moderate income that you can put there. So it's those income categories that are required.
Yeah, still, I would like to see corresponding categories with that. Thank you.
All right. With that, I'll adjourn the study session. And we can move into...